Good evening, everyone. ¿Cómo están? Buenas noches. Es un gusto estar con ustedes. It's a pleasure to be with you all. Thank you for joining me tonight. This is our second town hall that we've hosted. I'm proud to be the District One representative for San Diego County Board of Supervisors. I wanted to start by sharing a little bit about myself. I grew up in California, in Mexico. I'm the proud daughter of Mexican immigrants who waited tables for a living. Before I got involved with politics, I used to be a community organizer with an organization called Acorn that preceded ACE. So that was a long time ago. I also am a surfer, and that's how I got involved in the cross-border pollution issue, which we'll touch on tonight. As an activist, I was an environmental activist, and I really never planned on becoming an elected official, but I just wanted to serve my community. And in 2018, I ran for the first time, and I became the first Latina, Latino ever to be elected to the city council in the city of Imperial Beach. And then later, I became the mayor. And now, I'm very fortunate and blessed to represent you all in District One. Thank you. So, for generations, decisions have been made miles and miles away from here, where we shape our lives, and not always for the better. When resources are scarce and priorities are set elsewhere, entire communities can fall through the cracks. Our families, workers, and neighborhoods have too often been treated as an afterthought. I think we can all really, truly attest to that, right? Those of us who live in District One. We breathe in the pollution. We see the neglect in our infrastructure. We have felt the lack of investment and opportunity. And I truly believe that this is due to a system that rewards those in power and connections while ignoring those of us without. So for too long, that system has treated District One like it doesn't matter. I actually ran for office to change that, to make sure our communities finally get their fair share of attention, investment, and care. We are already changing the way the county sees us, not as a problem to fix, but as a community to uplift. And that's why I'm here today, to share information about the county and to hear from you on the issues that matter so that we can fight for them together. So, I get this question a lot. Like, what does a county do for you? What does a county do for society? So, the county government of San Diego serves many vital functions for San Diegans. We have courts. We have the district attorney's office. We have the sheriff's office. They're all part of county government. The county administers elections and also manages many other essential services, especially health and medical services for county residents. In addition to that, the county government provides city services like schools, libraries, police, and firefighters in the unincorporated areas of San Diego County, which aren't part of any one city. And I know that there are some of you here tonight. Those of you who live in Spring Valley or Lincoln Acres. Yeah? Raise your hand. There we go. So those are communities that are unincorporated. They're not part of the city of San Diego. They're not part of Chilavista. They're not part of National City. So, the Board of Supervisors functions as their council in a way. So, I'm their representative on the county Board of Supervisors. So, our county has an $8.6 billion budget. That's billion with a B. That's $8.6 billion of your taxpayer dollars. So, it's incredibly important to me to ensure that your taxpayer dollars are spent effectively, efficiently, and back in community. That, to me, is an incredibly important priority. What else do we do at the district? So, we also connect you with county services like marriage licenses, like voter registration. We also award grants, such as a district office award, community enhancement, and neighborhood reinvestment grants. I was talking to some of you earlier about those opportunities. So if you're part of an organization or a project, we're going to share some information at the end on how you can access those grants. We also make appointments to boards and commissions at the county. I know I also have some members of advisory committees and boards present here tonight. So, if you're interested in serving in that capacity, also, please let us know, because that's definitely an opportunity that is available to you. And finally, we put forward community-centered policies to improve the life of people in District One. And that's something that we're going to touch on a little bit today. So, just wanted to share who our current board is formed by. As you can see, we have five districts. These are the current representatives for each district. For decades, the Board of Supervisors was controlled by forces that we can refer to as the status quo for a long, long time. But thankfully, now, that has begun to change. There's now a pretty forward-moving majority on the board that's starting to use the full power of the county to improve the lives of San Diegans and getting the county government off the sidelines in addressing the problems our communities experience. My office of District One is firmly, firmly committed to taking decisive action whenever we can help our communities. So just because things haven't been done a certain way in the past doesn't mean that we can't do that moving forward. And like I said, my office is all about taking a people-first, community-first approach in everything that we do. So, that's on the Board of Supervisors side. We also have the administrative side of the county, right? It's a very large enterprise. We have about 22,000 employees at the county. And we appoint a chief administrative officer who manages the day-to-day operations of San Diego County government. And currently, our C A O is Ebony Shelton. She's wonderful. So, one of the most important responsibilities of the Board of Supervisors is the allocation of the county's $8.6 billion budget, as I mentioned. This budget funds vital county services and improvements to our community, which is why your participation in the budgeting process is so vital. As I was talking to some of you earlier, the county has a portal for collecting opinions and feedback from the community called Engage San Diego County, where you can learn about and contribute to the development of county programs. So I highly encourage you to visit engage.sanddiegocounty.gov. There's going to be plenty of additional opportunities. We're going to have budget workshops. We're going to have board meetings and public hearings where everybody will have an opportunity to share what are your priorities as far as the people's budget, the county's budget. But this is another way you can also ask for what you see a need being in your community. So, our district covers the southernmost portion of San Diego County, and we have about 650,000 residents within District One. More people live in our district than the entire state of Vermont. How crazy is that, huh? So District One, as I mentioned earlier, contains the city of Chilavista, the city of National City, the city of Imperial Beach, as well as parts of the city of San Diego. This includes the southernmost part of the city, San Isidro and Otay Mesa, as well as Barrio Logan, where we are, and parts of San Diego, Golden Hills, South Park, Sherman Heights, Mount Hope, Grant Hill, Logan Heights, Shell Town, and South Crest. Yes. Also in our district are the incorporated areas of the county, including Benita, Spring Valley, La Presa, and Lincoln Acres, as I mentioned earlier. So, our office's main priorities are to protect San Diegans from federal funding cuts, the Tijuana River Valley crisis, and fighting for our workers so that we can also protect immigrants in our community. Those are just some of the district's priorities that we're going to be spearheading in the very near future. Well, we're already spearheading them. So, I do want to talk a little bit about some of the federal funding cuts that our county, well, actually, the entire nation is experiencing right now. We did have a bill that unfortunately... Have you all heard of the big, so-called Beautiful Bill? Who agrees with it? Who doesn't agree with it? I would call it the Big Ugly Bill. Yes, because it's crazy. They're proposing cutting safety net programs and, you know, social services entitlement programs that we're all, you know, have a right to access, especially our most vulnerable in our community, right? The immunocompromised, the elderly, the disabled, children. To move funding to, you know, give cuts to billionaires and other programs that aren't a priority. So unfortunately, in addition to the cuts mandated by this law, California is also facing illegal cuts that this administration is directing at our county, and it is hindering our ability to provide the services that our communities rely on so heavily. Our district has the highest need. Out of the entire county, District One has the highest number of people who depend on these safety net programs. So you can bet that we are going to fight like hell to make sure that nobody falls through the cracks. And, yes. So I did want to just touch briefly, for those of you who may be unfamiliar with these programs, there's two programs administered by San Diego that are going to be the most affected by these cuts, Medi-Cal and CalFresh. Medi-Cal provides health care for low-income Californians. CalFresh is also known federally as SNAP. It provides food benefits for families who need assistance and economic benefits within our communities. And as I mentioned, our community of District One has the highest number of people who rely on these programs. So we need to make sure that we find ways to ensure that none of these programs are fully cut and that our community members and neighbors aren't impacted. Now, I briefly also want to touch on the government shutdown, where today's the 15th. Yesterday was the first pay period that federal workers are going to miss their paycheck because of this shutdown. Until a new funding bill can be passed by Congress, services through the county will continue. But unfortunately, a prolonged shutdown could further imperil essential services. We're hopeful that the majority in Congress, on the Senate side and on the House side, can come to an agreement because the more time that passes, the more impacts it's going to have on our community. So we need everybody to connect with your representatives in Congress at the federal level so to make sure that we make our voices heard so that we can continue to advocate for a resolution to this shutdown because nobody should be experiencing this as a working family. And that also just has detrimental effects, ripple effects, right? Like, the TSA workers, they can't decide not to show up to work. Otherwise, we're going to have plane crashes or other types of impacts. So it's important that we end the shutdown as soon as possible. That's right. Exactly. And that's the thing. So, not part of the presentation, but one of the key areas of disagreement between Republicans and Democrats is that Republicans don't want to pass a bill that would open the government again because they want to take away some of the subsidies through Obamacare, the ACA. And the Democrats want to make sure that nobody loses those subsidies because it makes the difference between you've been paying, for example, $500 a month for your health care, and by removing those subsidies, people will end up having to pay $1,000, $1,500 that a lot of people who are already on fixed income, there's no way they're going to be able to pay that, and they're going to lose their health care and could have very detrimental and negative effects if that happens. So that's why, you know, Democrats are holding the line when it comes to that. Not that this presentation is meant to be politicized, but that's just the reality of what we're facing right now, and it needs to be said. So, I want to also talk about our district is home to a large number of active-duty military service members, veterans, and their families. There are also residents who work as federal contractors at military bases and are being affected by the government shutdown. Nonprofits are working hard to bridge the support gap caused by the shutdown, and we encourage any military personnel or veterans to access the resources these organizations have made available to help. I know we have some folks representing the veterans community here tonight. The San Diego Military and Veteran Council has convened an emergency response group of local organizations to support military and veteran families impacted by the government shutdown, ranging from financial resources to VA benefits and operations. 211 Courage to Call is a county partner, and the San Diego Veterans Coalition are ready to help assist. And just for those of you who may not have that number, this is the number to call, where you can access some of these assistance efforts that are being offered, or they can help you navigate where to call or how to refer you to a program. The service is absolutely free. It's confidential, and it's veteran staff, and is standing by to help you navigate the government shutdown or any other issue. The county is absolutely committed to supporting our military and veterans through the shutdown and beyond with every resource available to us. So... What's that? It's Courage to Call, and the number is 877-698-7838. All right. So what action has the Board of Supervisors taken recently? So since we've taken office, we took office July 22nd, we've taken action to protect as many San Diegans as we can from these cuts, forthcoming cuts. We made $380 million of county reserves available to offset federal cuts. We did that in August. Then, at the end of September, we created a special subcommittee at the county to protect San Diego families from benefit cuts whenever possible. This subcommittee is comprised by the current chair of the board, Tara Lawson-Reimer, and the vice chair, Monica Montgomery-Step. And there's more action on the way. This subcommittee is going to analyze potential sources of revenue because obviously, the reserves that we have that we've made available, as you can see here in the graph, is not going to be enough, it's not going to be sustainable to be able to provide a funding gap for those cuts that are forthcoming. So they are going to be exploring other ways that we can generate revenue so that we can continue to provide the services that this administration and this Congress has sought to create, leaving our most vulnerable unprotected. Yeah, I already mentioned that. Okay. So, that's on what we've been doing to offset the H R one cuts. Next, I want to touch briefly on the Tijuana River Valley crisis. I know that some of you may be familiar with it. Some of you may not. So I figured it's good to give an update on what's been going on and what's the latest because this, whether you may know this or not, has the ability, or this crisis has the ability to affect everybody in San Diego, not just the South Bay, not just Imperial Beach and San Isidro. Now, we understand that it has the ability to travel via air very, very long distances. So I'm going to give a little bit update on what we've been doing there. So this is, I just want to acknowledge, this is one of the clearest examples of what happens when government neglect becomes a way of doing business. This crisis should not exist. And the reason why it exists is because we haven't had enough investment. We have had deferred maintenance. We have been an afterthought. And unfortunately, now, this has become the biggest environmental and public health emergency in the Western Hemisphere. Who here has heard of Flint, Michigan? The crisis, right? Peanuts compared to what we're seeing on this. So polluted water from Mexico enters the U.S. This is, I just wanted to show this map. So for those of you who may not know, this is a map of a watershed. This is the Tijuana River watershed. You see that line in the middle? That's the border. So most of the watershed is in Mexico. Three-quarters are in Mexico, one-quarter in the U.S. The red area is the Tijuana River Valley. So the river flows south to north, comes across the border into the Pacific Ocean through the Tijuana River Valley there. And unfortunately, it carries tons of uncollected trash, tires, industrial waste, untreated wastewater, stormwater, and it all flows just south of Imperial Beach. I also wanted to show you guys this infrastructure map. I'm sure some of you have heard about, oh, the $600 million that we secured to upgrade the sewage treatment plant. Who's heard that on the news? Okay. So on the top there, where it says 40 million gallons over there, up there, that's the International Wastewater Treatment Plant. That treatment plant is treating sewage from Mexico. And it was not, it was under-treating sewage, right? We didn't have it at max capacity. And then, it fell into disrepair because we didn't have enough annual operation and maintenance funding. So when Mexico and the U.S. came together, they signed an agreement, a binational agreement. You might have heard when President Biden and President AMLO were still in office in 2022, and they said, okay, U.S., we're going to put $300 million into our sewage treatment plant. You, Mexico, you put $144 million of your own money. So that was the agreement. As that process started to take place, we found out that that plant on the top in San Isidro was in a complete state of disrepair and needed an additional $300 million just to fix it. So when you hear the $600 million that we acquired to fix and upgrade the plant, that's where the money went. The money never made it to Ciudad de Vida. Nobody touched it. It went straight from the federal agency to another federal agency to upgrade that plant. So that's one. And then Mexico, the $144 million that they committed to fixing their infrastructure, part of that went to this other plant just on the bottom left there, where you see the second little river. That plant's called San Antonio de los Buenos or Punta Banderas, it's commonly called. That treatment plant had not been working at all for 15 years. So all of the sewage that would go to that plant, they would just put a little bit of chlorine, and then it would go straight into the ocean. So that, when we had currents coming from south to north, it would hit our beaches all the way to Coronado, all the way past Point Loma. So as AMLO was exiting office and then President Scheinbaum came into office, she took the keys of that project, and they said, we're going to finish that plant. We're going to finish fixing that plant. And they actually did. They built it in a year, in less than a year. Yes. So it went from not treating anything to now it's treating 18 million gallons of sewage per day. It sounds like a lot, right? We're talking about 18 million gallons of sewage at the Punta Banderas plant, and then at the San Isidro, we're taking it from 25 to 50. Sounds like a lot, right? But is it enough? No. And the reason why is because none of these plants that you see, all this infrastructure, none of it is treating what? The river. So we still have daily flows of between 18 and 20 million gallons of just flow of pure concentrated industrial and residential wastewater flowing through the river without being captured, without being treated, permeating our beaches, permeating our air, permeating our daily lives. And that's why we need to fix the river. That's why you have heard me ad nauseam talking about declaring a state of emergency. And guess what? Everybody's declared a state of emergency. Ciudad de Vida, Ciudad of Chilavista, Ciudad of San Diego, the county has just re, we've already re-declared on emergency 18 times. But there's two government agencies that still have it, state and federal. And what would a state of emergency do? It would help waive all the laws that exist so that we could fast-track fixing the river. So we could fast-track diverting the river into treatment. So that's why we're not going to stop calling for that emergency declaration because until that river is diverted and treated, we're not going to start to see relief, unfortunately. So you may hear other things out there. I'm just telling it how it is. Right? Okay. So I want to go back to how this is a crisis. We've been, you know, those of us who live further south, we've been experiencing the severe, we call them odor events. But basically, you walk out of your house or you open your window, and it just smells like rotten eggs anywhere you go on South Bay. That's a gas called hydrogen sulfide. It has a very distinct smell. It's like rotten eggs. And it's found in bodies of water or riverways or sewage treatment plants because it's what sewage releases into the air. And what we've now learned because of scientists, there's four different universities that have been studying the air, the soil, the sediment. We even had University of Austin come down and do a comprehensive study. They've been finding very high levels of all of these pollutants, not just in the water, but now we understand it's in our air. So we were able to narrow down a specific spot in the river that is really where we see the intense levels of gases being emanated. We call it the hotspot. It's called a Saturn Boulevard hotspot. See on the bottom right over here? That's the river. You can see what's the river because you see kind of green, you know, the riverway there. You see white in the yellow box? On this box? That's not snow. That's foam that you can see from space. This is a satellite image of how much foam is on top of the river. And what's concerning is that that hotspot, the red dot right inside the red circle, is less than a mile and a half from all these different schools. So you have Berry Elementary. You have Nestor Academy. You have Southwest High. You have Mar Vista High.[1668.48] you have Mar Vista High, you have Mendoza Elementary. These are all less than two miles from where the scientists have now 100% empirically found that levels of hydrogen sulfide are way above what state standards should be. This is a lot of graphics, but all you need to know is that the state standard, just to give you an idea, is 30 parts per billion of hydrogen sulfide. What does that mean? That when you have 30 parts per billion of hydrogen sulfide, you can smell rotten eggs. It's an ambient standard. The scientists have been finding 4,000, 5,000 PBB levels of hydrogen sulfide, especially during the nighttime. So everything that people have been telling us, I have headaches, I have migraines, my kids have asthma, they've never had asthma, they've never had these allergies. Or the doctors at South Bay Origin Care telling us that they've been seeing increases in gastrointestinal symptoms and illnesses. And they've been asking them, without even going to the beach, they've been falling sick? That's why. That's what we've been seeing. We've been seeing people experiencing headaches and nausea and fatigue and eye, throat, ear irritation, coughs, stomach issues. And even though we got those reports first-person basis, we now have two studies from the Centers for Disease Control Agency, or the CDC. They came down from DC. They did two different studies. One of the studies surveyed almost 2,100 respondents in all of the areas impacted by pollution. And guess what? Exactly what community had been telling us for almost two years is exactly what they found in the studies. 70% of families that were surveyed were reporting either one of these symptoms that I just mentioned or having fallen ill themselves or having a family member that fell ill. 90% of respondents reported having their daily quality of life severely affected, meaning they were scared to go exercise, they were scared to let their kids play outside. They were affected by all of these symptoms, so they couldn't go to work. So there was loss of productivity, loss of income. So that's why when I call, when we call it the biggest environment and public health crisis in the Western Hemisphere, it's because of this. It's not exaggeration. So what have we been doing about that? So as you may have heard, as soon as I took office, we took immediate action to shield residents from the immediate impact from all of this pollution. The county, now in cooperation with the San Diego Air Pollution Control District, is providing free air filters for people in the most affected areas of the pollution. We've also been working on securing $50 million in state funding for new infrastructure. I think I was talking to Josie about Prop 4 funding that was passed by the California voters. There's billions of dollars for climate resiliency that we're just making sure 50 million were allocated for cross-border rivers. Now, that's why I was in Sacramento not even a month ago, making sure that that money that the voters already approved makes its way down here and that we could put it to good use. Also, we've been, we passed a resolution in support of advocating for $1.4 million to conduct a comprehensive study on the pollution as well. And we've also already approved ordering an economic impact study so that we can better understand what are the real estate property value decrea, is it being decreased or is it not? Are small businesses being affected, that type of thing? Excuse me. And we've also commissioned an epidemiological study. And all that means is that we now have the reported data from community. We have what the local clinics have been telling us. Now we just need to make sure that we're doing a comprehensive analysis so that we can better understand how to create and make interventions that are, you know, effective and prevent and protect people from getting further sick. So that's on the Tijuana River Valley sewage crisis. How else are we fighting for working San Diegans? We've also developed an action plan to, thank you. I was like, thank you. I was struggling there. So we've developed an action plan to fight for working San Diegans, both to make San Diego more affordable and to increase the wages of working-class members of our community. In the last few years, we've seen the prices of housing, groceries, transportation, and utilities just explode. And the current economic situation is truly, doesn't have to be this way. So we're making sure that we are focusing on reversing that trend so that San Diego can get back to being affordable. We know we are all feeling the crunch on that front. So what specifically have we been doing? We've been working with the state of California to lower utility rates and whole utility agencies responsible for price gouging. We passed a resolution in September in support of a package of laws that have now been signed by the governor and will do precisely this. We're also increasing funding for the Innovative Housing Trust Fund. This vital fund offsets funding gaps for affordable housing projects to make sure new affordable housing gets built. Right now, we hear a lot about like, we need more affordable housing, we need more affordable housing. But the problem that we hear is that the developers, that it doesn't pencil out when they have a project that they want to build. If you put in affordable housing units, well, they can't, you know, the margin of profit is too low. Well, we're making sure that we figure out a way to offset those funding gaps. And one of the ways we do that is through the Innovative Housing Trust Fund. The county can put skin in the game and put some money like we, actually, I think there's a slide here. Yes, yes, yesterday? It feels like a week ago. Yesterday, Casa Familiar broke ground on the Avanzando San Isidro project. It's a beautiful project, years in the making, with tremendous amount of community input, different agencies. We have there the city, the mayor, of course, Ciudad de San Diego, the state of California, two different banks, three different developers. Where they're going to build 103 units of affordable housing that will eventually, people living there after 15 years will have the option to become homeowners. And that's what we would like to see, those types of projects everywhere, right? Because that's the American dream. Why shouldn't we have access to that? Protecting tenants is also a huge priority as well. We thankfully, as you may know, we already have tenant protections here in the city of San Diego, the city of Chilavista, the city of Imperial Beach, National City. We're hoping that they soon pass a tenant protections ordinance too. Why? Because the cost of living continues to go up. And if we have people being displaced because they want to just jack up the rent prices, nobody wins. Nobody wins. So we need to make sure that people stay housed, those who already have housing. We also need to make sure that we level the playing field and ensure working-class wages rise faster than the cost of living. Things that we're doing, where myself and other board members, we sit on board agencies like MTS, Sandag, Air Pollution Control District, and San Diego Community Power, which is the agency that manages your electricity, well, actually manages your electricity in general, is an agency that, actually, when I was the chair, we were able to reduce rates by 5%. So those are some of the things that we've been working on. And something that I will be working on is cutting wasteful spending. We need to make sure that we give a really good analysis at the county of what kinds of contracts we have, what kinds of spending we have. We need to make sure that any excess spending, we just cut. We need to make sure that we make efficient use of your taxpayer dollars. And then, of course, addressing homelessness. This is an issue that impacts everybody, not just District 1, all the districts. This is unfortunately something that continues to get worse. Despite all of the efforts that are being made, we still see people living on the streets. Our brothers and sisters continue to become homeless and live on the street. It's heartbreaking. It's immoral. And we need to do a lot more to make sure that people can get back on their feet, back into permanent housing, get the treatment and support they need. I'm happy that we're tackling the homelessness issue along with our nonprofit partners. Father Joe's Village just opened a new detox treatment center in East Village with 44 new beds. And that's actually, East Village is in District 1. This represents an over 50% expansion of the number of treatment beds in San Diego and will accelerate our progress in moving San Diegans experiencing homelessness off the street and into housing and into treatment. That's something that I've heard over and over again. When people are having a crisis, you know, somebody who's unhoused, that they get taken to the hospital or to the ER, you know, they get treated, right? Their acute symptoms, anything they need. But then they're released back on the street and then it's the cycle never ends. So we need transitional programs. And this is exactly one of those programs of Father Joe Village's where people who are experiencing addiction, who are ready to make that big change in their lives, can do it here in a safe environment where they're surrounded by wraparound services, medical assistance, counseling, and everything they need. So we need to see this model replicated everywhere. Because obviously, 44 beds, that's not enough, right? We have almost 10,000 unhoused people in our streets. So that's something that District 1 Office at the Board is going to be focusing on a lot. We're almost to the end, guys. So protecting immigrants is a huge focus of my office. Obviously, this falls under federal jurisdiction. But we need to do our part in helping protect immigrants in our communities from the unconstitutional abuses that we're seeing by this administration. We're seeing not just immigrants being targeted, but also permanent residents and U.S. citizens that are just being separated by their, from their families because of the way they look or because of the language they speak. And that's not okay. So we saw that happen in my district, District 1, in South Park. The raid that happened there was awful. We had agents walking around in the middle of the afternoon as people were going to dinner, carrying around high caliber weapons and, you know, throwing flash bombs. Terrifying people who live there, who were just trying to go to dinner. Terrifying children who were at a daycare center right next to where this happened. So we, I don't think that is public safety in any way. So we are going to continue to push back on that, making sure that there's due process. And at the Board, we're also making sure that we are expanding funding for legal defense, especially when it comes to unaccompanied children in immigration court. We've also secured $500,000 in philanthropic money from the Previs Foundation to expand the Immigrant Legal Defense Fund. And also, back in July, we passed a Know Your Rights training program for small businesses. And these are just a few of the things that we started to do. There's going to be a lot more that we're going to be doing. And then, just to wrap up here, I joined members of our community and local leaders. I think some of you are here, the organizers, San Diego Labor Council. Every Thursday at 10:00 a.m., they're going to be outside of the downtown courthouse protesting this overreach and abuse that we're seeing. People going into the courthouse, doing everything by the book, going to their appointments, only to be arrested and deported. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We kidnapped, as somebody said in the audience. All right. So thank you for bearing with me on the presentation. So now we're going to start with the Q and A, part of the program. I know many of you submitted questions ahead of time when you registered. So we picked out a few that I'll read out loud. And then, how are we doing on time? And then there's some that you guys submitted here today, right? Okay, okay. We have Mabi Castro. Lifeline guides individuals and families to achieve self-sufficiency through behavioral health services and economic empowerment. Can you share insights about federal funding impacts on behavioral health needs in the county? That was Mabi Castro. Are you here? Hi. All right. So the most significant impacts will be felt, unfortunately, in supportive housing. Permanent supportive housing is the gold standard for what we need in order to make sure that we address some of these core issues around behavioral health. Also, unfortunately, we're facing reduction in housing vouchers. We all know that to get into Section 8, it's like a 20-year waitlist. So I think we have to do two things. We have to fight back what we're seeing coming down from the administration and from Congress. That's a no-brainer. But we need to really do that, not just say it. If you guys don't reach out to your Congress member and to the administration, they're not going to care. And then on the county side, as I mentioned earlier, we are exploring sources of additional revenue through that subcommittee. The subcommittee is going to come back to the Board of Supervisors with recommendations on what those additional sources of revenue could be. And that's where we're going to need community to show up and support those efforts because otherwise, we're just going to see all of these essential programs completely be cut. And that's not going to benefit anybody. That's a lose-lose situation because if we think that right now we have a homelessness crisis, imagine what's going to happen with a lot of these folks fall off these programs. The crisis is just going to become worse. So that's a great question. All right, what's the next one? Raúl Palomino, are you here? Are you willing to partner with our community in an organic and sustainable way, including our faith communities? Well, of course, absolutely. That's a no-brainer. You know, I've already been involved with the Our Lady of Guadalupe and SDOK. They've been very active in S A Y, too. We've been, they've been very active in processions and demonstrations and workshops to support our immigrant neighbors and brothers and sisters. So I think that, from my perspective, again, even though some of these issues don't fall under our jurisdiction, it's important to be out there. It's important to show community that we're with them. You know, even if that breeds some criticism, right? I've been criticized, like, well, why are you out there being so outspoken on this? If you can't do anything? Well, it goes a very, very long way to show that you stand with community. And that's how I see things. So yes, I would say we're absolutely going to continue to build partnerships with faith organizations, with community-based organizations. All right. The next question is from Monique Sandoval. Are you here? Okay, the question is, given the ongoing Tijuana River crisis and possible federal cuts to Medi-Cal and CalFresh, how is the county balancing environmental priorities with protecting vulnerable residents who depend on health and food assistance? How is the county preparing to support communities most affected by both these issues? And how can students or young people get involved in these efforts? So obviously, you can't speak about one or the other. You're talking about an intersectionality here issue, right? We have people that are already underserved, that are dependent on these safety net programs. We have, as you well know, here in Barre Logan, we have maritime emissions, pollution, freeway pollution, the Tijuana River pollution. So I think that we need to ensure that none of these folks, none of these communities continue to fall on the wayside and continue to be ignored. So that's why it's so important, the actions we've already taken at the county to free some of their reserves, to make sure that we start investing in offsetting the cuts from H R 1, also investing in fixing the hotspot at the Tijuana River Valley, which will increase or decrease the amount of gases that people are being exposed to. So you can't talk about one or the other. It's about talking about all of the above. And that's something that, that's why we're taking all of these actions to ensure that nobody falls through the cracks. Okay, next question from Doyle Morrison. Supervisor Gere, residents in National City's West Side, a community already burdened by high asthma and cancer rates, I was just talking about that, from truck and train pollution, are concerned about new industrial projects like a proposed fuel depot that could add more pollution. Given your work to address environmental issues like the Tijuana River, how can you and the county help prevent further environmental harm and support National City's efforts toward cleaner air and environmental justice? So I know that's, who's here from National City? So that's, for those of you who may not know, there's a project that's being proposed to place a fuel depot that will increase the amount of cargo trucks coming in and out of the city. As I was mentioning earlier, this area, Barre Logan, National City, have been overburdened by pollution disproportionately for a very, very long time. I know this project that is being proposed is vehemently being opposed by community and by community-based groups like Environmental Health Coalition. Even though that decision is up to the city council, right? They already considered voting on it and I think they postponed it to a later date. I, as county supervisor, I want to be very respectful of each city's council's prerogative to make decisions that their constituents that elected them into office, you know, make. But at the end of the day, when it's a situation like this that is so, that could severely impact communities that have already been so overburdened, I have to speak out and I did. So I sent a letter to the city council opposing the project, making sure that their voices are heard. Oh, yeah. I think they brought copies of the letter, if any of you are interested in reading it. Okay, next question. Jose, from Jose Daniela Mendaris. Are there any Are there any initiatives to invest in parks and recreation or community improvement projects? So, are you here, Jose Daniel Armendariz? No? Okay, so it depends on what parks of what area we're talking about, right? Chicano Park, Campbell Park, they're all within different cities jurisdictions. So Parks and Rec truly fall under each city's jurisdiction. The only areas where that wouldn't be the case would be in the unincorporated areas of the county. I know Spring Valley, for example, is something that's definitely on my radar because when I was campaigning, I heard loud and clear from community that they didn't feel they had the same amenities as other areas of the county, e.g., areas on the other side of Sweetwater Reservoir. So that really resonated with me. I want to make sure that, you know, that's equitable. For example, the Sweetwater Reservoir could use, on the Spring Valley side, a lot more, you know, care around trails, access to the reservoir, interpretive signage, amenities. So that's something, I'm not telling you next month, but it's definitely on my radar, and I want to make sure that we look at our budget and invest in these types of projects.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, five, we have five minutes. Oh, my goodness. Okay, actually, somebody already asked some. How can Spring Valley get assistance in addressing issues that we showed you on the tour? And can Spring Valley's community engagement representative be solely assigned to our community since we have no other form of government representation? We need their full and complete attention to continually stay engaged with addressing these issues. So where's Danny? So Danny, Danny is our Spring Valley, yes, representative in all of this area. But like I said, look, loud and clear. I know that, again, we started this presentation with, for far too long, there's been neglect, there's been communities that have been just forgotten. And especially for me, I want to give everybody the same attention, but especially those that don't have a direct representative at the city level because you guys don't have that. I want to make sure that we dedicate all of our time and efforts in hearing what you guys need. My, my, my one tour, obviously, it's not the one time I'm going to go and then never go back. Like I said, I have some very core issues that I've already identified, right? The parks improvement, sidewalks are needed, the flooding, flooding issues that are related there to the cobra next to the swap meet, increased patrolling by our sheriffs, right? And the encampments that are affecting the quality of life of Spring Valley are just a few of the things that, just off the top of my head, I have very present. So we're going to make sure that we have a consistent, consistent presence there and, and make sure that your voices are heard. Are you willing to, are you willing to have another town hall meeting with Spring Valley community to address our ongoing problems? We're here, Spring Valley's here, of course, of course. I was already talking to you guys before the presentation. No, 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 it's great, like, yes, this is just the beginning. So we're going to have, this is our second, we're going to have another one on the 25th in Chula Vista, and then we're going to have more in Lincoln Acres, Spring Valley, Bonita, and other areas of the district. So that's, that's just going to be standard. To me, that's like a no-brainer. Do we have time for one more, or? Okay. Okay, so I have one here from David Armilly. Why does San Diego spend $22 million per mile to put pavement on dirt? I've had it with... Is he here? I didn't mean to, okay. So it depends on where you live, right? So it depends on whether you live, again, not to beat a dead horse, but whether you live in an unincorporated area or in the city. So if you live in the city, whether it's San Diego, Chula Vista, National City, Imperial Beach, obviously, your first point of contact is your, your council representative in that particular city. Here, we're, of course, in Councilmember Vivian Moreno's district, District 8. We're also in Mayor Gloria's jurisdiction. He represents the entire City of San Diego. If it were National City, it would be Mayor Morrison. If it were Chula Vista, it'd be Mayor McCann. But that's not to say that if you guys see something that you need, if you maybe haven't had an opportunity to engage those offices, we can also help in that. We have great relationships with our partners. I think the office of Mayor, of Mayor Gloria is here. Are you here? There, oh, yes, say hi. So, so we have really strong relationship with our colleagues at the city level. So we're going to put up our, yes, I think it's here. We're going to put up our, our information here before we wrap up. So just already introduced Danny, want to introduce the, our community director, Director of Community Engagement, Paula. Then we have our newest team member, Mary Ann De La Torre, there she is. So Mary Ann's going to be focused on Chula Vista, National City.
Bonita.
Bonita.
And Lincoln Acres.
Bonita and Lincoln Acres. So if you live in Lincoln Acres, Bonita, Chula Vista, or National City, Mary Ann is your connection. She's also going to be focused, with a special focus on veteran and military affairs issues as well. Okay, so if you have anything in that space, Mary Ann's your, your, your person. And then Danny, we already met Danny. Danny's assigned to East Village.
Spring Valley.
Spring Valley, South Park, Golden Hill, Barre Logan, and Mount Hope. And Shell Town. And then we have Andres. Andres is allocated to San Isidro, Tijuana River Valley, Otay Mesa, Imperial Beach. Am I missing? And Nestor, of course. All right, so just want to flag for you all, I already mentioned this, our next town hall will be at our brand spanking new office in Chula Vista, which will be located at Oxford. Are you all familiar with the Health and Human Services, right from, across from the Palomar Trolley Station? That's going to be our district office. So right now, we're at the county building downtown. We understand that a lot of people who live in South Bay, sometimes it's difficult to make it all the way downtown. Maybe they work, maybe they don't have a car. So we're going to have a district office to make things more accessible there, where we're going to have office hours. I'm going to be working out of that on certain, certain days. So, and then we're going to have the community town hall on the 25th there as well. And then we have, please, please, please join us. We have Dia de los Muertos event at the county building downtown. It's going to be wonderful. We're going to have Ballet Folklorico from different schools. We're going to have, you know, musicians coming, and we're going to have altares for both loved ones that have gone. We're also going to have a pet altar for pets we've lost. And the, one of our altars is going to be dedicated to, especially to immigrants who have lost their lives, trying to make a better life for themselves by coming here. And we're also going to have face painting, arts and crafts, all of that. All right, so last slide, I promise. This is our information, as I mentioned. If you want to engage on budget issues, engage.sandyegocounty.gov. If you need to call us, this is our direct line, 619-531-5511. If you're interested in applying to our grants or have other issues that you want to raise with us, this is the email to contact. You can also sign up for our newsletter with the QR code, and, and these are our handles on social media if you want to follow what we do on the day-to-day. All right, so that's it. Thank you, thank you so much.